Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 20th School Board meeting. I'd like to call it to order, and we will start with the pledge. We don't have anyone to lead us in the pledge. We'll have to wing it ourselves.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're at approval of the agenda. Is there any motions to amend the agenda?
Madam Taylor, I would like to make an amendment. If it's all right, can we make a -- do you get a transportation update after the select board update?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of the minutes from the July 30th meeting. Did anyone have any changes?
Nope, so moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention? Wasn't here. We have no public in person, and just Lynn if she wants to talk. No hand. All right, moving on. We have no select board member yet, so we are cruising along to transportation update.
That was nasty.
That's the record?
I'm Bridget Connelly. I'm the operations manager. So I wanted to start off with some positives that we kicked off July with some introductions between myself and the team at Dial. Specifically, I connected with Paula Harper, who was the recruiting manager from STA. What she was able to do when we connected is that, if you hopefully noticed, she really went through town and put up signs, really in as many locations as possible, including the banner at the middle school. Additionally, between the both of us, we were able to get Facebook posts up pretty regularly on the school pages, on the Dial page, on the STA page, on the town pages. She went to job fairs, farmers markets, different community events. It's been posted on Indeed and Craigslist. So the word is out about hiring, because that really seems to be the first area we need to address in order to have enough drivers to fill our buses. And so the outcome of that is it looks like we have two drivers in line. One is a non-CDL driver who will be taking over one of the special education routes, which will then potentially free up Ginger to get back on the pink route. Whether that will happen before the very first day of school or not is unclear. And then there is a CDL driver that should become available sometime in October. So that's where we are with hiring. The other positives are that we have the Co-Brown route posted and up and running. It needs to kind of pick up the pace a little bit, but that will happen as kids get into their sports and their activities and just routines and schedules pick up. And then the Oyster River route is posted as well. What we have not received as of this evening is the Dover High School route for both orientation and for the school year, and we have not received updated Barrington routes. So that is the position that we are in right now despite ongoing communication all of July and August.
And orientation is next Thursday.
I anticipate tomorrow at the latest for Dover. We do anticipate that we will have seven buses to start the Barrington school year for the schools in Barrington. And tomorrow, Deanna and I are meeting with Kelly and Tom, and our hopes are to talk through some of the barriers that we've run into and to really look ahead about setting some procedures and timelines for both the district and for the bus company about sharing information in terms of student information that the bus company needs, and then about when we need to receive routes to review them, and then possibly have enough time for sending them back for updating, and then so that they get out to families in a timely manner with accurate information and ensuring that they're following the guidelines of the policies that the district sets. The goal is to improve communication, but most importantly, the goal is to get informations to families in a much faster manner that is accurate.
Hopefully less frequent communication as well.
During the retreat, we talked about, was it during the retreat? The pickup model at elementary school, wasn't that what was problematic and causing a bunch of the behavior issues on the bus? Have we worked through that so we're something new and different and expedited?
I mean, I think that we're trying. We have a couple of things in place in terms of, I'm going to say almost like a using pickup patrol to help us print off who should be on the bus and actually almost taking attendance as they get on the bus so that we're not waiting, trying to get kids out, right, or having buses having to circle back because somebody didn't come out of their classroom in time. And then I think the other key is just going to be the timing with which we send the kids outside to get onto the buses from the classrooms, which hard part has been that we've had three or four buses who show up at one time, and then the other buses don't come for another 10, 15, 20 minutes.
What causes that?
The reason the push was for staffing is because if we have enough drivers for the buses, then we don't have to worry about not getting buses to the ECLC in elementary school in a timely manner. And so that's why I focused a lot of July on recruiting what they could do to recruit. But then it's also looking at the routes and making sure they're efficient and running on time and that the drivers are following the prescribed route that is set out at the start of the school year. So yes, I think we have a plan on our end in terms of what we can do to tighten up dismissal and to tighten up sort of the very, like a more systematic way of getting kids out of the building and onto the bus and the buses off campus. But it will also depend on how the routes look.
So are two of the buses, like, doing double duty, so they come from somewhere else in order to get to?
Sure. So the buses are doing the middle school route, and then they're circling back to pick up kids at the ECLC and going to the elementary school. And so in a perfect world--
Really, the, right, sorry.
No, in a perfect world, right, everything, there's enough time and everything runs smoothly. It's hard to analyze that until we look at the routes to say, yep, it's ready to go.
The biggest delay, if you think about the three or four buses who tend to get there, like, when we would expect them to be there for dismissal, is that then if they're arriving at that time, there's one or two buses who are picking the younger students up from the ECLC. And so those buses who have arrived can't leave until those other buses get down from the ECLC because they're transferring kids. And so two buses pick up all of the ECLC kids. And when they get down here, they all have to transfer to different buses.
Got it.
So we have to start the process at, you know, 2:55, but by and large, we can't release any of the buses until much later than that.
How late? You said it was like 15, 20 minutes, right?
There was one bus that consistently did not leave until 3:25.
It's like a half an hour.
Essentially, the message has been to the bus company. We have plenty of instructional minutes at the elementary level. What we don't want is this inconsistency, right? Let's set a start and end time that we can actually accomplish.
Yeah.
And it's frustrating for the teachers because you have to stop teaching if we, if you lose half your kids because some of those buses are there, and then you don't want kiddos sitting on buses for this length of time. So that's part of, the huge part of our conversation tomorrow is like, let's run these routes appropriately, accurately, so we can set on, land on a start and end time that we can actually stick to, that makes sense for all of the buildings. But what we've been running into is when you are only running six buses, when this town used to run on nine, can pretty comfortably run on eight, depending on who we've added and where those addresses are, of course. You know, we haven't, that becomes the backlog on the middle school end, so we haven't been able to run efficiently for a couple of years.
So, but we're going to have seven, and then if Ginger comes back, that'll be eight?
Yes.
Running with eight.
Remarkable.
If all the stars align with these two potential drivers.
Yes.
Ginger counts as two drivers.
Only she can drive two buses.
She can.
I mean, she'd probably try.
Okay.
So we are cautiously optimistic and hopeful.
Appreciative of the community who is probably quite frustrated that they don't have their routes yet.
They're asking for start and end time, so when do you hope, do you hope after tomorrow's conversation to be able to have a better sense of those? Okay.
Are you getting lots of calls about that?
From families?
Yeah.
Not quite yet, no.
Not quite.
More, a few high school calls, which we get at the startup every year.
Yeah.
You always have to flesh that out, and we all know that our high schools are much, our cluster stops are much further away from homes, and that's just the nature of the size of our town and that we run a bus out to, you know, particular schools, so.
Yeah.
Anything else from the minute? All right, so I'm going to suggest we circle back to our select board update now that--
No, he missed his opportunity.
Apology, just got out another meeting of the library board.
They haven't had a meeting. Are we good to go?
Yep.
Oh, okay, sorry. Just came from the library board meeting, apology, and time for the vote before that, because it's pretty casual today. Not much to report. Probably of interest to all is the, the state has extended the deadline for the use of the grant funds that they have for the rec, which will mean, among other things, probably the library will not have to close other than for their move, and that you'll have access to them probably through the whole academic year at that site. It's not a, we haven't firmed up the contracts yet on the, on the construction, but that kind of opens that up. We've been anticipating closing the library for three or four months, but it seems only, it may take a month to move, to move the library, but that'll be the only closure there, and they'll continue on with the rec. Our next library meeting is on Monday, isn't it?
I thought you said library, sorry. Yes, we have one coming up.
I think our turn at town hall on Monday. And up, yeah, Monday next. Yes.
At 10 o'clock, you got it.
Twenty-six. And we're just beginning our, beginning our budget process, probably, first of October will be the real beginning, although the advisory budget is starting meeting in September, so. Any questions? Thank you for having me. Thanks for tolerating me. I love your institutional chairs, but I'm just--
Oh, I didn't notice those chairs!
Yeah.
I didn't notice the mismatch is all gone.
That looks really cool.
For folks online, come, join us in person. You can see the lovely chairs and partake of them. Deanna, would you like to move on to the role of the SBA B C?
Well, that is there at a request of the board from last meeting, so I will defer back to you all to have that discussion, and maybe we can--
So part of the discussion I had at the last meeting was, I was hoping that the school board advisory budget, I mean, you would get information at the same time we do, so that they have a longer time to look at it. I mean, when, we got a 30, 29, 28, 29 million dollar budget. It deserves to have a lot of eyes looking at it, and, you know, and I, and I think that if the budget committee were looking at the sections at the same time we were and had time to review them like we do, that if they had questions, that maybe they're going to get answered because we're going to ask the same question. And so I, I just think that I'd like to see the advisory budget committee get the information on the same timeframe we do. They can review it, and then they'll have their chance to speak at whatever point the board decides, but I think it's, I think it's warranted to give everybody the information all at the same time.
Someone, for refreshment, when does, when do we give the A B C their budget books?
We typically give it to them right before the Thanksgiving break.
And when do we get ours?
You get an initial budget presentation in October, and usually, you usually get the books either that night or that upcoming week prior to the first budget workshop on October 22nd.
And then when do we nominate the, the A B C?
Usually in September. I mean, so there's no reason why they can't be at, all of our budget discussions are public, so they can hear all of the information at the exact same time we hear them.
So this year, for the first time, we put, I put together an actual budget committee schedule--
Yeah.
--because in the past, they've kind of struggled to coordinate those meetings, like, they don't have a secretary or something, right? So I thought, let's just give them a schedule upfront of when, when we're having our meetings, initial presentation through to the end, as well as giving them those times to touch base. We just posted today, went out, actually, earlier than usual, so we can get ahead of it--
Nice.
--posting for the advisory budget committee and put right on there that it's anticipated 10 meetings-ish, starting October through, because I think it would be great for them to hear from the initial presentation on. So I'm hoping to form the committee earlier so that if they have the time, they can join us at all of these discussions and hear it all in real time, anyway.
I think being at those budget discussions should be an expectation of participating in the budget committee.
And it hasn't been in the past, so that's how we've publicized it this year.
In the past, it was. It seems to have fallen off.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, I think, if we just involve them and get them a copy of the initial budget from the--
Sure.
--get-go. Because I do remember, like, as I said in the last meeting, there was folks that asked very pointed and great questions, and there were times they covered ground that's already been covered because they weren't involved in the earlier process.
Well, and hopefully that would stop that. And, you know, if you're printing five books and you get another five people on the budget committee, they're going to get a book anyway, so give them the information at the same time. And if they choose to sit here, that they're reviewing it ahead of time, and when we're going to discuss it, that stuff tonight, maybe they're going to get the answer to the question, so that--
Perfect. At least another thinking along.
I mean, frankly, in the last handful of years, we've struggled to get--
Three.
--an advisory budget committee to participate. So I think by setting the expectation and the clarity upfront, and also posting it anywhere and everywhere we can, will hopefully drum up more interest and involvement in that process, so.
Yeah, and if you had a shorter window, like you've done in the past, that would be frustrating to me to say, hey, you got a $28 million budget, paw through this in two weeks and have, have your questions and stuff ready, so.
It's like a month, right? Because it's, I think I always said two weeks, but it's really like Thanksgiving till, because I remember, have a bowl on it by Christmas, right?
Yeah, that was always the goal.
Yeah. It's happened more up until the budget hearing as of late. It kind of bleeds into January. Yeah.
I, I think one of the reasons sometimes they've gotten involved later is because we go through so many discussions, and we, as the board, rightly so, make the decisions of what is actually going to go forward. And so them weighing in, thinking about studying stuff that ends up not being part of the budget, I think sometimes they felt frustrated by that, like, why did I invest time in that when it--
Agreed.
Because a lot of the stuff will become, that's true, because a lot of stuff becomes non-starters, because you guys will come through and say, I want this, this, or this, and we're like, not this year.
Well, especially since last year, we put forward a five-year, you know, so obviously we can't do everything in year one. So there were a lot of those initial discussions where it was, okay, yes, of course, you want all the things, but we're going to rank the priority here and push these things off to year two or three, and so you might have people that have a very different opinion about that, but that is ultimately your decision about what goes forward. So I think that's also another reason why some budget committee members in the past have felt like, let me just wait until you all have kind of made those first blush over the, you know, recommendations and where we're going to, the true starting point, right? So.
How did that advertisement go out?
So we will physically put it in all, like, you know, post office, caliphs, town hall, and also ask Connor to put the posting itself, or at least a link to, and a little message on the town website, and then ours as well.
How about Berlins connections, too?
And all the doors of all the buildings, I can ask for it to be put there as well. Yeah. And Chamber, we're going to give it to the Chamber, too, because we'll hit, we've hit a really nice, different slice of the community by doing that, business members in town, so I think that will also be helpful.
Anything else on the--
In the school buildings as well, of course, like we typically post.
And maybe in any, like, back-to-school, school newsletters, just saying, hey, looking, looking for you.
Yes.
I just don't know, yeah, we have a lot of--
We'll have Chris send it to you guys for the first September newsletter.
Just have a lot of great people in town who know a lot, who I think, like, see them join in.
All right. Would love to see it be competitive.
Maybe, maybe. Maybe you'll have to come in and do actual interviews at a board meeting, you never know.
Title IX law changes?
Yeah. So Title IX law changes are pretty significant, and we, I'm going to go through, there's, there's a lot of, of regulation changes, so I'm just going to kind of go through the gist of it today. In the packet was kind of, they were sample policies from our legal team to adopt, and we'll go through that just to kind of talk through what that looks like, but essentially, we have to have these policies in place before students enter our buildings, which is fairly soon. So we'll talk about that when we get there, but I'm going to give you kind of just the gist of, of what these changes are. Again, they're fairly extensive, so I'm not going to give you every little detail of it, but I'm going to give you kind of the, the most important. So these new regulations dropped from the Department of Ed in April, and they said that we had to have them, kind of, they took effect August 1st, they have to be in place before students arrive in our buildings. They are regarding sexual harassment, but now it includes sexual discrimination as well. It all kind of fell under that, but the, the terms and the definitions have changed fairly significantly. So the new regulations that were put forth brought in our obligation to respond in the way that, I'm going to read you the legal term, that if we have knowledge of conduct that reasonably may constitute sex discrimination in its education program or activity, the reasonably may is where it gets sticky, right? So like, we have to use our best judgment. I'm the Title IX coordinator, so it'll be me that will have to use my best judgment to determine if it reasonably may constitute sex discrimination. It's a big change from 2020, when we had to have actual knowledge of it. So now we just have to have, like, kind of some knowledge of it, right, or we have to have heard about it to determine that it's sex discrimination. So essentially, if we think the alleged conduct could be sex discrimination, we have an obligation to act, so we have to investigate it, we have to proceed. People used to have to put in writing their complaint, we call them, right, so, which would then be determined if it was important to move forward or not to an investigation. Now it can be verbal, it can be in passing, it can be written, it can be overheard, and it has to be, and everybody in the district is now a reporter. So if I, if Moira Taylor's walking through the hallway and hears something that reasonably may be sexual discrimination, she has a duty to report it. But once she reports it, she's, she's done, right? Then, she's done what she's supposed to do, she's complied with the law, and that's when I would take over. So much like abuse and neglect, all, all staff are now mandated reporters where they were not before. With that, we have to train, right? So it's another obligation on the district to train our staff. It's not a bad thing, they should know about it, right? We have a duty to train on Title IX anyways, but this is a more robust training because they have an obligation where before, they didn't necessarily have that. So they--
Is there any, is there any update to what the definition of sexual discrimination is, or is it just the same definitions, but now we're casting in that wider order to make sure it doesn't happen?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
And I'll go over that in a second. So the new, they continue to address harassment, but it broadens it to sex discrimination, where it was previously just harassment. It includes sex discrimination, sex stereotyping, sexual orientation, and gender identity discrimination. So it's really, it's a huge net, right? It's, it's really, it's broad, which is the complication of it. So previously, we had to have multiple staff members in our district trained on the complaint procedure, the investigation procedure. People had to have different roles within the investigation and the decision-making. Now one sole person can do it, which is, is good, and it puts a lot of responsibility on the Title IX coordinator, but it's important because it keeps it consistent, right, and we don't have multiple people that need to be part of the process when it's really sensitive information. The Title IX coordinator reports to the superintendent, who, if it gets appealed, it would go to the superintendent at that point. So that's kind of, that's a positive thing, I think, in the regulations. Again, that's kind of like very broad of the regulations. The other kind of big thing that came out of this is a brand-new policy that we are being asked to adopt. It's J I E. We do, obviously do not have it at this time, but it protects pregnant students. So obviously, we have not had this experience yet in our district. Hopefully, you know, we don't, but we, we should adopt this policy to protect pregnant students within our district. Essentially, if a student becomes pregnant, the Title IX coordinator has an obligation to investigate, to make sure that things are okay. So we also have to provide reasonable accommodations for pregnant students. I imagine this would be a more complex thing at the high school level, where we don't have a high school. It still is important to put in place because we do have school-age kids that this potentially could impact. So my recommendation would be to move forward with that recommendation as well. Some other kind of big, significant changes, we do have a duty to address sex-based harassment. We have, we have to respond to sex-based harassment, we have to investigate sex-based harassment, where it was, you know, just harassment before, it broadens it. It provides additional protections for LGBTQI plus from sex-based harassment, and it provides those protections for pregnant students related to sex-based harassment. So all of the policies put forward, AC is a policy we already have, that's nondiscrimination and equal opportunity. We also have ACAA, that's harassment of students. There are two procedures that were put forward for that, so one is student discrimination and harassment complaint procedures. harassment complaint procedures, the other one is student discrimination and harassment complaint procedure for sex-based discrimination. There's, so we don't have those two procedures. We do have a procedure, but these are reflective of the Title IX changes, so we really should comply with those. For, we also have AC/AB currently, so this would just be taking place of that, of harassment of employees, because this covers that as well. There's two procedures that follow that, very similar to the student-based procedures, just with staff, and then that JIE policy, which is for pregnant students. So there's kind, so these policies were put forward by Drummond Woodson, and when we, Deanna, last time went through this procedure, and we did a major overhaul on Title IX policies, this was the same firm that we used for those, and we used their sample policies for that. So my recommendation would be to take these policies, Barringtonize them, right, and then put them into action as soon as possible. If we don't comply, which I don't know why we wouldn't, to be completely transparent, but if we don't comply with the timeline and putting these policies in place, we do run the risk of losing federal funding, which would be obviously a disappointment, because we get federal funds for all sorts of things in our district.
Katie, I don't see how we can comply before students return next week, because we have to have policy reads twice at the school board level, and we won't have read them at all.
So you have the ability to do an emergency adoption in the moment? That's what most districts are doing across the state currently, and then we would kick it back to policy committee, do a review, bring it back in the Barrington format, and make any adjustments for our particular age range if needed. I suspect that, given that the same legal firm did the original ones in our update, that we most likely will not make any changes to those policies, because they help us to comply with federal law regulations.
Assuming, assuming that we do this tonight, because I had the same question you did, when would you expect that we would see them to, for formal approval?
You mean after policy committee?
The second meeting in September, which is the 17th. The first meeting is tours, and it will give the policy committee time to digest them.
So we'll review them, that first one in September, and then the next board meeting, have our second reading, and then if there are any changes, they'll go into place after that.
I would recommend you emergency adopt tonight, so that we're in compliance.
Right, I heard that, but then, but if there are any changes, we will have to do two readings.
Then we would bring them back on the side team.
But at the very least, we'd be in compliance that way.
Right.
I have more to talk about, but that's specific to the policies. The other pieces are just kind of what's going on in the state of affairs with other pieces of Title IX that we don't have to do anything with right now, but I think it's important for you to know about. And then also two job descriptions that come with being a Title IX coordinator and a humans' rights officer. So I don't know if you want to vote on the policies, or if you want to continue with my spiel.
Shoot your whole spiel in that moment.
Can I ask you questions about policy before we move on? Just to clarify for policy. Do we want to make, after Deanna hears an appeal, are we going to hear an appeal at the school board level if she gets appealed or not? That was something that said we should perhaps consider.
Yes, but my assumption and what is currently going on around the state is it's turning to legal at that point.
So after Deanna goes to legal?
Is what's happening. It doesn't mean that that will happen in our district, but that is what we're seeing as a trend.
My other question was, this is more, maybe it's just curiosity and my own ignorance, but on the lists of potential discrimination, there was a difference between students and employees, one of which was, you know, you can't age discriminate against employees, which, okay, you probably can age discriminate against kids, that's fine. But why genetic makeup? Like, that was different. Like, you can't age, you cannot discriminate against an employee for potential genetic makeup, but you could, what does that mean, and why wouldn't that be included in kids?
I don't know that answer, but I can figure it out when you're back to you.
Thanks. I saw that as one of the bullet points, and I'm like, why is that different? So I just didn't know. The only thing was, maybe there was some predilection to some sort of chronic disease an employee might have, and you can't say, we're not going to employ you, but the kid, it doesn't apply. So that's the only thing I could think of, but I'm not getting with it. Is that what you're thinking?
No, I saw the same. That list should basically be the same of what you do not discriminate on, and there was a few things that were missing from the kid list that were on the adult list.
I concur.
I concur.
Other thing to note is, we'll probably be talking about these policies a lot, not just, again, on September 17th, because there is litigation that, as soon as it went into effect on August 19th across the state, and so it's going to, there's already districts who are being told, you know, you have to stay with the old laws, et cetera. So we're going to just wait for the guidance, the legal guidance from the state, and see how that all unfolds. But I think it will take several months, so we could potentially, you know, make changes, adopt, you know, end of September, and then it may come back at us October, you know, November, December, when it gets through the court system at the state level. I'm sure, I would imagine, given the complexity of the issue, that even at that point, it will then be appealed by either side, and it will continue throughout the course of the school year. That's my prediction.
A lot going on with Title IX around the world right now. So included in the packet that I had sent you are two job descriptions. The human rights officer is not something we have to have in New Hampshire. It is a federal thing that we have to post who the human rights officer is. It is me. I do, the legal advice is to have a job description so people are clear on what the role is if they're going to have a complaint or need that person. So the advice is to accept this job description. The Title IX coordinator is something we legally have to have. Again, it's a, it's what I, what the person, shouldn't say me, but what the person is supposed to be doing in the day-to-day to ensure that these policies are upheld and that there's a fair process. So my other suggestion is to adopt that job description, which we do not currently have. And then the kind of big thing that we're not going to really touch right now, because we're being, we've been told to just kind of sit back and wait, because there are going to be new regulations that drop from the New Hampshire DOE for women in school sports. We are being told to just continue to comply with New Hampshire law right now. There's no policies around it, but we will, once those drop, I would imagine that those policies will come, and there will be some law changes, but there are currently some lawsuits out about transgender students participating in women's sports. So, um, stay tuned, I guess is what I'm saying, because we will have to discuss them.
Okay, when you say we should continue, what do you mean by continue?
So currently in New Hampshire, there's a boys team, there's a girls team, or we could have a co-ed team, and we are being asked to just continue that guidance that, you know, a transgender girl is not to participate on a girls' team. But those are what the current lawsuits are, and, and actually, I think it was just yesterday, one of them, one of the transgender girls is able to participate in the soccer team, so that's illegal.
But is that, was that only for that one instance, or is that?
Currently, that's that one instance. There are two active lawsuits out right now, and I don't know where it will go, but I anticipate, based on that one, that they will also be able to participate. And so until the feds and the state decide to agree on rules, which may not happen, we've been told to kind of like, sit tight, and if something comes up, to contact our legal team.
Or the Supreme Court.
Do you anticipate the possibility of that coming up anytime soon in this town?
Not with fall sports.
No.
Lose some tact.
And I think, I think the kind of like, other piece of that is, it's kind of unpredictable, right? Like, we never really know what's going to happen with that, but at this point with our student population, we haven't had that pop up as a concern, so. But it's always changing.
I guess that's kind of where I was headed. Is there any known potential?
Not yet.
Issues?
We will continue to roster sports at the gender in which the child was born and is on their birth certificate. It's about as clearly as I can state it.
Lots of questions. Tonight, we're just asking you to do the emergency adoption of the policies. We will put all of the appropriate Barrington information on them before they go to our website or in our school staff. Our staff will be trained on opening day of Title IX, so.
So will you be putting a disclaimer that this is an emergency rule until the board approves it?
Right at the top, where we usually put the dates of first and second read, we can indicate that, absolutely.
And then again, we'll kick it back to policy for.
I would just hate to have somebody read it, and then they're going to go, what we, this is what we-
Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I have the list of the policies. If somebody needs them.
I was going to say, do you need them spelled out?
So it's AC, AC/AA, and the two procedures that go with AC/AA, so AC/AR1 and R2, AC/AB and the two procedures, so AC/BR1 and R2, and then JIE, which is the protection of pregnant students.
I will make that motion to, on an emergency basis, adopt policies AC, AC/AA, and the two procedure documents, R1 and R2, AC/AB, and its two procedure documents, R1 and R2, and policy JIE.
Second thought.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then about the job descriptions, anyone want to make that motion, right?
Yep, so that's for the Title IX coordinator job description and for the human rights officer job description.
And you're, just to be clear, you're currently going to do both of those jobs?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second thought?
You're going to do the-
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Did you want to say something, Gar?
Just wanted to talk more.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? You didn't speak. All right. Oh, more job descriptions.
More job descriptions. While we're at it, let's just keep going. So in, as people are aware, our, I'm going to call them school counselors, are currently listed as guidance counselors. It's kind of, to be completely transparent, outdated language for a school counselor. The school counselors came to me at the beginning of last year and were like, can we be called school counselors? And I was like, no, because your job description is guidance counselor. Like, we hired you as a guidance counselor, but I understand. So kind of give me, give me the why, and give me what you feel like you're currently doing, and what you feel like you're not doing in your current job description that you would like changed. So their biggest reasoning is, school counselor is kind of like the going term right now for school counselors or guidance counselors. Guidance counselor is kind of outdated. So in the two documents, I'm just going to go over the quick, biggest changes. Their goal is more aligned with what they are currently doing, especially in particular with the social-emotional development of students via counseling, which is a change from before. So they, they thought that their goal should change a little bit. If you go down, most of it is really the same, so providing services to school staff, they collaborate, development of behavior management programs, they don't develop them necessarily, right? So now we have a BCBA, we have an RBT on board, they're more collaborative than they are the actual kind of leaders of that, so they wanted that removed from their job description, which I totally agree on. They sometimes are creating those plans, but not always, it's not always appropriate. If we kind of keep going, some of their activities in, they used to act with, they used to be kind of like the special ed evaluation placement team person, not really appropriate anymore. So now they, they want to just change the word from act to collaborate, which is also more appropriate. So really kind of minute changes, but the general majority of the job description remains the same. We're hoping...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What are they certified as under the DOE?
I would have to pull their licenses.
They are, it's code 40, and it's school counselor.
School counselors, yeah.
I was going to say, I'm pretty sure it changed, but I'm pretty sure we have somebody who knows explicitly. Yeah, they did change that designation a couple years ago?
Yeah.
Year and a half?
No, more.
More?
A little more.
Maybe I feel like we're behind the times on it, but yeah.
Yeah, it has been a while.
So that's what we're asking, is that their title change and a few of their job descriptions change based on kind of the current state of affairs and the way we are currently servicing students.
So other than developing programming, they're not dropping anything from their current duties?
I'll make that motion.
There's a second? Garth? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll be thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. All right, policies.
Let me give you a quick kind of update of where we went from first read to second read. I feel like it's been a while since we've thought about policies. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, it does.
So they are up for second read. We, there was a typo on KCD gifts to schools. There was a more less, that you actually found that error. So that was the only change that was made for second read. On KE, we added a sentence there under number two, adding failure to document and sign the complaint will result in termination of that complaint. So just putting that definitive end to it there. And then on the KEC, the library instructional material selection, the appendices were listed inaccurately at the end, because we had used several different model policies, and we didn't delete the language from one versus another. So made that correction as well. So nothing of any major substance other than the addition of that sentence to finalize when a complaint drops if it's not put in writing.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept policy KA slash IJO, IJO slash KA, duly-coded KCD, KCDA, KE in KEC, as amended.
Second thought?
Any discussion? Thank you for the summary, Deanna. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, we're at public comment. Folks online, if you want to raise your hand, we'll turn to our one member of the public to see if he would like to speak.
Actually, I would.
No.
I know. Just because, my experience, the ABC really moved some dollars and cents around, and then came to the select board to make policy decisions. And so I think maybe that may help you guys, that the ABC can really focus on those dollars and cents, and then you can really focus on your policies. That allows you to do that rather than having to go through all the nickel-and-dime stuff that's important, but kind of takes away from your policymaking. Put some thought.
I think you know that here on the school side, we focus on every nickel and dime.
I don't want to screw up.
So I had to know that the town can just focus on policies and not nickels and dimes.
I don't see any hands raised, so moving on, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Just want to ask one question before we do that. Are we good? I assume our buildings are ready to go, policy of a move.
We are down to the wire on a few of them, I have to say.
You guys do good work.
But they are looking really good. I think the one has been the floors, the waxing at the middle school, so teachers are going to be getting in there pretty late. We're still at it this week. But as you recall, there's been some pretty major things over there that we've had to take care of, like, all of those leaking windows, so like, the whole wall, like, kind of, kind of had to come off.
Worseness?
Middle school. The bulldog entrance.
The wall leaked?
Well, the windows, that, it's a whole wall of windows, right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we reported that out last spring.
It's just leaky, so whenever it rains hard, which it's been doing a lot lately, it leaks down and onto that new rug and the floor, and it happens in the cat.
What is that? Is that new?
No.
It's always done that?
It's just been getting worse.
Oh.
Yeah, so it really came to the point last spring, when we were getting those early rains, where it was like, oh, yikes, we're going to have some damage if we don't take care of these windows. So Portland glass was out yesterday and today?
Today, yeah.
Today, yeah.
You mean the facilities committee, normal?
I didn't know, I didn't know any of that.
I'm-
All safe light, repairs.
It's, I'll find you the minutes, we brought it forward. How'd you miss that one? That's a big one.
Climate change, wow.
Yeah, so.
I'm glad it's fixed, I want to see that get ruined, that's beautiful, man.
I know, yeah.
Next meeting, building tours, so we start at the ECLC.
Yes, I would thank you for that reminder. It does say SAU, so I'll make sure we have that correction on there. And we will start at the SAU, unless there is something that comes up where we need to have a meeting prior, and then I'll touch base with Moira on that, because we could arguably start here, have a meeting, and start at BES, but the original plan was to just start down at ECLC and have some tours and get ready for the unveiling of-
Middle school.
The elementary school entrance.
Elementary school.
Is amazing, like it just-
Don't build it up too much.
No, it looks really good, seriously, yeah.
And the first day of school is when?
Next Thursday. Yeah, we have mentor day tomorrow, and then all staff is in on Monday, opening day is Tuesday, annual training completion and some grade-level team time will happen the other part of Wednesday, and kids in on Thursday and Friday. It's time.
Time flies when you have-
It sure does.
Now entertain a motion for adjournment?
Popsicle playdate Thursday night, if anybody wants to come.
What is it?
Five to six popsicle playdate at the ECLC.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah.
You're going up against the concert series.
Five to six.
Oh, the Beatles are here.
You're going to have to prioritize, Rick, this will be an interesting decision you all have to make.
Gah, gah, popsicles.
There won't be anybody at the concert.
The rock music, the children that are just beginning their educational journey at the ECLC.
There'll be nobody at the concert.
Nobody will be there.
How good are the popsicles?
Are they bomb popsicles? They're little popsicles, because the wellness committee says, you know, no sugar, no, no.
Get that then. Popsicles.
I will get you a cone if you come.
Really?
Or like a child, yes.
He got so excited.
I will get some.
All right, so is there an motion for adjournment, please?
Don't move.
I'm just going to say, I'll get some.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Will you add sprinkles to his ice cream?
Like, a shake that happens, it'll happen tonight, it's not, because Peter Chris will be shopping and-